Seventeenth, uh, meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order, join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, with that on our agenda, we have public comments. Anybody like to address the board on something that's not on the agenda this morning? Now's the time, going twice, uh, time's up, okay. Item 1.3 is the agenda review and adoption.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Fahy to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The minutes of December 3rd, 2024, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Workman to approve the minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, community announcements, Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce my plan to shrink the county board to three.
For efficiency purposes.
Cutting the fat. I think things will go a lot quicker. Governor Ventura, he wanted unicameral legislature. I said we should have tri-cameral legislature and I will serve in the House of Lords. Uh, nothing much, uh, other than, uh, this is our last meeting of the year. Uh, congratulations on 22 great years, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, uh, see you next year.
Thank you very much. Uh, we were able to serve all 22 of those years together.
It was fun.
Commissioner Fahy.
Uh, a couple of things, we had the AMC conference that the bulk of us attended. I serve on the Public Service Policy Committee and we elected a new chair there and a new vice chair. And one of the common phrases was to be at the table versus being on the menu. And we had talked extensively about, uh, armor, which is the radio system and, uh, LMR encryption planning that is taking place. And currently, most of the radios that are used by fire departments, the sheriff department, they have 256, or excuse me, a 64 bit with this encryption. So now they want to bump it up to 256. So there's going to be a lot more talk about what Motorola can do and it's going to be an additional expense for us coming down the road on these radios. Also, I was part of the Rural Policy and Development Conference and that, uh, the path to higher ground is through common ground, which was a common theme. And currently, the state of Minnesota, it's the top five lowest unemployment rate and has the top five highest labor force participation. And an interesting fact that currently there is more deaths than births taking place because people are aging.
Why did you look at me when you said that?
No reason.
Yeah, and they talked about what happens with the demographics with individuals. Most 20 to 29-year-olds will move out of the county that they live in. And then most 30 to 49-year-olds move back into the county that they were born. And if you look at that demographic, 30 to 49 years old, they usually are buying a higher quality home. They are starting a family and they support the school system, et cetera. Also, in that committee, it was we've lost one-third of the nursing home beds in the last 20 years. And that's just shocking and that's mainly due to, to staff, workforce shortages and then all the additional nursing requirements. And then unfunded Monday, or excuse me, unfunded mandates, the aging infrastructure inflation. And then they talked about civil servants and public workers are not looked upon favorably anymore. Uh, they talk about bulletproof glass barriers to protect people and workers. And it was just disheartening to hear that point because as we try to do and, and serve the best we can and then ultimately worried about being protected is kind of...
Counterproductive sometimes.
It is. And then also, we had a MICA, uh, board meeting and we continue to move forward with that executive director search. Uh, they're going to be doing interviews starting on the 20th. And, uh, 25 people had applied. They have it down to about four to six people. And we're gonna hopefully have a new executive director to lead that organization in January. And then also right in Anoka County are joining the MICA organization, which will do great things for the budget and the planning process. And that was approved at that meeting and so they'll be joining in 2025. And another positive note, our MICA dues are going down and they're just decreasing only about $900, but it is a decrease. Also, uh, if you've noticed, if you're an avid snowmobiler such as myself and a member of the Carver County Snow Runners, we have all the trail signs up and now we're just waiting for the snow to come. And then congratulations to Paul Erickson. He's retiring from the Carver County Library System. He's been a longtime employee and a branch manager in the Waconia and the NYA branches. And there's a party for him this afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Waconia Branch. If you want to go bid farewell and, and best wishes to Bubba, he would greatly appreciate that.
You don't need a library card to get in?
You do not, Commissioner. And then also just farewell to you, Gail. This is your last meeting and just thank you for your leadership and mainly your guidance for all the residents in Carver County. Job well done.
Thank you. Other community announcements, Commissioner Lynch.
Uh, with that, I didn't know where we were because obviously I came in late. I too would like to congratulate you on 22 years of service. Best wishes to you. You said you retire, said you're going to retire and I guarantee you you won't be retired. You're going to be tapped to serve on this board or you've been on the church board many times, been on the school board. You'll be tapped and you'll still be serving. So, uh, uh, I served with you for 20 years. You're one of the finest men I know. So congratulations on your wonderful retirement.
Thank you very much. If you, if you enjoy what you're doing, it's not work and this has never been work for me. So. Commissioner, um, Udoman.
Uh, I too attended parts of the AMC conference. The keynote speaker talked about hope. Hope coming from culture was a piece of that. Um, and then also hope coming from action and results. Um, and then what I always find great about AMC is a chance to connect with our peers across 87 counties. Um, and then people that serve the area. I see you're here as well with Extension. We, we had a chance to talk. Um, and then one of the things that I'll just recall and have a couple of comments about Commissioner Degler as well. Last year, I don't know if you remember, one of the conferences that we went to or one of the breakouts was about insurance. And so when we talk about going to these things, it's not just going about meetings and counting how many hours we go to meetings and talking about the meetings that we went to, it's actually getting stuff done. And so we had a very clear direction from our staff, collective staff. I reach out to staff at least once a year, ask what you want. Number one by far was get us better family plan, family plans. And we heard a presentation at AMC last year. And so a year later, here we are. Um, it's been stated publicly, I'll state it again, last year if you were on a family plan versus, uh, next year, you'll save about $4,000 in premium. That's real money and real paychecks going to real families. And so that was one of the areas, tangible areas that we worked on. Um, I'll come back to comments about you in a second, but, um, but that action also came through last night. There's another guy around town that's been in his role for about 15 years and that's Mayor Winchettle. Mayor Winchettle has served, uh, city of Chaska in a number of different ways. Um, first it was through Public Works, then it was through Fire. He was the, uh, retired as the Fire Chief of Saint, uh, Saint? St. Louis Park. I was saying St. Paul because I was thinking about Victoria. Anyway. Um, and last night they did a very nice standoff. It was his final meeting as well, reception at nine o'clock. Um, and he went on, uh, for about 20 minutes about all the accomplishments that they together as a team have done. And he's been part of a lot of team and I wanted to echo that. Um, and then he pardoned a number of people too as his form of humor. But, uh, congratulations to Mark and all the things that he did. I know a unique relationship with him. Five, six years ago when I was considering running for office, he was the guy I leaned on to say, hey, wait a minute. What's, why is that road that way? Or why are these people this way or whatnot? And, and I know the same has been true for you, Gail. Like you know every stitch of acreage in this county and beyond. You understand farms and people, but I think that more so than anything else, if you look at what Commissioner Degler has done for this community, just look no further than his kids and his grandkids. They're active in their communities, their coaches, their teachers. You get to see Ellen a little bit more than most of your kids, uh, as she coaches. Um, but it's not necessarily the impact that we make, it's the impact that we impart onto the next. And so your kids and your grandkids are doing that. Congratulations in your retirement and, um, good luck.
Well, thank you very much. For me, just two community announcements. The one's very brief, uh, Southwest Transit. They're gonna come up with a new bus and a new route. So they're looking for, um, an artist. If you're 11 through 18, and then they break that down into two categories, 11 to 14 and then 15 to 18, to come up with a symbol to wrap the bus. So, uh, put your art entries in to Southwest Transit by the end of January. And who knows, you might see your artwork driving around on a bus. And the final community announcement for me would be, uh, this is the Christmas season. Uh, get out and enjoy Christmas pageants, programs, plays, concerts, whatever. You mentioned grandkids. I've been to two programs already and there's multiple other ones on the docket. Uh, so get out and enjoy. People put a lot of work into, uh, performing these, uh, issues. So enjoy them and don't forget the real reason we're celebrating Christmas. So with that, we'll come to the end of the community announcements and we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a lot of things on the consent agenda. I'll just highlight them a little bit. First one, capital assessment asset, capital asset policy. We have a professional service agreement, assistant for drainage assets. We have a sale of message signs. We have public workshop purchase. We have a contract for the Arboretum Area Transportation. We have 2024 pavement markings, final payment, and another 2024 pavement markings, a resolution. We have an agreement with the federal participation for Highway 41 and 10 project. A final payment for Highway 2025 project. Final payment, uh, for Highway 41 project. A professional service agreement for Highway 4110 project. A purchase of a vacant lot, uh, contract for engineering services. Baylor Park Plan Update, a special use permit for the Waconia Lions. A resolution for the 25, 2025 non-bargaining compensation. We have a request for a renewal contract with the Occupational Health. We have 2025 compensation range increase, a drug testing contract, national opioid settlement, funding approval. And then we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 collective bargaining agreements for the years 24 to 26. And then we have, I guess that takes care of down to there, a JPA with Soil and Water District, a resolution on a commissioner compensation, uh, JPA for the Community Development Agency, a county jail, uh, direction, uh, program for the county jail. And finally, a review of the Health and Human Services Commissioner warrants. Anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull at this point? Or is there a motion to approve as presented? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Lynch to approve as presented. Uh, just to note that I will be abstaining. I agree with all the, I agree and support all the, uh, consent agenda items, but the one resolution, uh, it could be construed as a conflict of interest. So I will be abstaining from the, uh, consent agenda. Any other comments? Commissioner Udoman.
Just a couple of comments, uh, 2.14, um, I guess under the vein of We Hear You, staff and community. People love their parks, they love their lakes, they love their trails. And five, uh, 2.14 gives us a huge opportunity to rethink what Baylor Park looks like. It's one of our more, um, uh, underutilized parks that has a huge opportunity to, to be there. Um, not necessarily in support of putting more playgrounds in there, but dreaming what that could be. And this gives us an avenue to do so. And then also under the guise of, uh, We Hear You, staff and, um, public as well. I think we've heard in the, in the past, if, if there's a way we can get contracts done sooner, let's do it. And I think we've heard that loud and clear. Uh, Carrie, I don't know if she's in the room yet, but she will be. And her team, they worked tremendously hard to take that to heart, not only with what I already commented about with healthcare costs, but also let's get this done for the morale of the people. And I think that these, uh, settlements represent the, the quickest that we've ever done it, uh, the least amount of disruption. Uh, it, it looks to honor the, the culture that's created when people, when, when you know people are waiting for those contracts to come and, and to be agreed to. And so I just, I didn't want the moment to pass. It's a heavy lift. Carrie's team did a great job. I, I think the other side, when you talk about the other side of the aisle negotiating it, did it in good faith to say, let's get it done, least interruption to the, to the organization. So thank you.
And it's a good point taken that contracts are two-sided issues. So it benefits both sides to get the job done earlier and in the expedient matter. Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and I will abstain. So let the record read four in favor and one abstention. With that, it brings us to 3.1, University of Minnesota Extension, M.A. Yeah, get the right page here. There it is. Tammy, you, you get this item. Take it away.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here today as your Extension Regional Director. My name is Tammy McCullough and it is my duty to share how Extension is your front door to the University of Minnesota in Carver County. Today. There we go. Today I will provide a brief overview of the partnership between Carver County and the University of Minnesota for local extension programs. In addition, I will formally present the 2025 to 2027 memorandum of agreement, which serves as our contract for extension program delivery in Carver County. Extension connects every county with the University of Minnesota through our county partnerships. In addition, your local office is part of a larger network of over 700 employees with faculty that have shared appointments in research, teaching, and extension outreach. Extension staff live and work in the communities they serve. Now, why would one want to partner with the University of Minnesota Extension? One, we have a local presence already established with our county government partners. In addition, we have access to research-based education and programs that are unbiased and non-regulatory. We can leverage additional resources and diversify budgets. We have the ability to co-create with community. We have 87 counties to draw experiences from. And we have trusted embedded resources through established systems, phone, email, website, in person. And we have a long story and a long history of bringing people together to learn, which began when land grants were sending out Extension faculty by train to talk to farmers in community.
It always starts with farmers.
Right, exactly. The Carver County Extension Program is comprised of a 1.0 FTE for Youth Development Extension Educator by the name of Devarti Bachacharya, a .5 FTE Financial Capability Extension Educator Samantha Sam Roth, a .5 FTE Agriculture Production Systems Extension Educator Colleen Carlson, and a .4 FTE Master Gardener Volunteer Program Coordinator by the name of Kristi Mack. Those three positions that are partial appointments are shared with your county, uh, your county partner, Scott County. Rita Yatzir provides the stellar administrative support for this team as part of the memorandum of agreement. I'm going to highlight just a few things from the year to date from these extension programs. 4H is the largest youth-serving organization in Minnesota. It provides safe and supportive spaces that empower youth kindergarten through one-year past high school to lead, learn, and flourish. In the October 1 to September 30th, no, there is not a September 31, just to be clear, uh, typo there. September 30th, 4H program year, there were 1,478 youth engaged in 4H in Carver County, which is about 7% of your Carver County youth population. Of the youth engaged, 510 were enrolled in one of the 10 community clubs in the county. 129 of those were first-year members, so having no previous experience with 4H. And there were 174 trained and screened volunteers that cared alongside those young people in their learning. Carver County has a strong retention rate of 4H members at 78%, which is actually higher than the state average for Extension. And 97% of Carver County 4H youth said they believe they make a difference in their community. Service learning is a really important part or important component of 4H, uh, which was measured in our annual youth outcome survey in the fall. Extension empowers people to take control of their personal finances to achieve financial capability and, uh, more importantly, stability. Money management education promotes tracking income and expenses. It also looks at creating emergency funds, setting attainable financial goals, paying bills on time, obtaining credit reports, and reducing debt. This is achieved through classroom education, online learning, one-on-one financial coaching, whatever is beneficial for the learner. In 2024, Extension provided in-depth financial counseling with an accredited financial counselor, Sam, to three residents, uh, with over seven sessions. to three residents with over seven sessions. In addition, she offered financial education classes to 51 individuals. Sam is a connector, and she does an excellent job of connecting her Department of Family Health and Well-being with Carver County and Scott County. And as a result of that, there's things like Veggie RX that are taking place in the community, SNAP education, and also super shelf, food shelf restorations. Extension is collaborating with many organizations to meet people where they are. The Extension educators' role in this is, one example would be with Beyond New Beginnings, where Sam is working to educate program participants on safe housing, stability, and reaching independence for those young mothers. This is evident from a quote from one of her program participants. "After meeting with Sam, I felt so much better and have been making all the required payments to keep my apartment." Extension education is vital as the local ag industry responds to the growing demands for food, fiber, and fuel. The Ag and Natural Resources, or A&amp;R, Natural Resources educator builds partnerships with county and regional agencies, ag producers, landowners, ag organizations, homeowners, decision-makers, and citizens that are interested in the science of ag. The A&amp;R educator is a key resource in ag and natural resources and has the responsibility of developing programming that is comprehensive related to cropping systems, livestock, farm business management, horticulture, natural resource conservation, and environmental stewardship. Colleen in Carver County as your educator has worked collaboratively with the Soil and Water Conservation District on cover crop education, ag bag recycling with Environmental Services, the Water Management Organization, NRCS, and the MDA on Livestock Investment Grants, and then the FSA Emergency Board. She's answered 210 technical assistance calls and offered 22 educational programs this past year on things like backyard poultry, land rat, private pesticide applicator training, beef quality assurance. She is also a sought-after speaker for the radio and service clubs on emerging ag issues. And last but not least, the mission of the University of Minnesota Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program is to share research-based horticulture knowledge and practices, cultivate diverse collaborations, support project-based volunteer activities, and inspire change to promote healthy people, healthy communities, and a healthy planet. So Carver and Scott Counties have a combined volunteer force of 162 active volunteers that work across the two counties. There is an expansive list that has over 74 programs and events that were executed in 2024 by volunteers that encompass the statewide program priorities of, which you can see outlined on the chart there, horticulture skills, local food, climate responsiveness, nearby nature, clean water, pollinator health, and plant biodiversity. And you can see a bulk of the work that's happening in these two counties is related to horticulture skills. But you can see that local food and supporting some of those community garden efforts is also really critical to the work of the volunteers in these two counties. One thing we know is that the desire to participate in this program is growing. We have 26 incoming interns, and we know that the events we offer sometimes sell out, have high attendance, and so we know that there's interest in the community in these topics. How do we know if anyone is better off? The year-to-date community value of those volunteers that are working in the community is $191,094. Some background information on the memorandum of agreement. So this is a partnership between the Association of Minnesota Counties Extension Committee and the University of Minnesota. We've had this contract since 2004 and done this statewide contracting process since then. Extension ultimately provides the package price to the county, and then we do the programming. And that package includes the salary, but also the fringe benefits and the professional development support for those individuals working in the county. And then, as a result of having a county Extension Office presence, our hope is that you see that it leverages additional Extension resources coming to your community like SNAP education. And... This is Exhibit A, which would be in the memorandum of agreement, and it provides the costs for 2025, 2026, and 2027 for the four positions that I highlighted in programming and the two summer internships. The Carver County Extension Committee, which is established by state statute, is comprised of six appointed members from the community, two county commissioners, and the county auditor or their designee. And we have an engaged group that meets five times a year for a three-year appointment. The Extension Committee is charged with providing input to Extension programs in addition to recommending an annual Extension budget. And on June 5th, the Carver County Extension Committee recommended the memorandum of agreement and the supporting exhibits in addition to the 2025 Extension budget. And I just want to extend deep appreciation to the Extension Committee members, Commissioner Dagler, Commissioner Lynch, Nick Katavi as the auditor's designee, Robin Beilefeldt, Patty Dietzel, Laura Tome, Ryan Brinkman, Lisha Virakumar, and Carmen Gessinger. And with that, I would like to bring forward a recommendation to contract with the University of Minnesota for Extension Services pending the finalization of the contract review process.
Questions for Tammy?
Thank you for your partnership. Thank you.
Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and Tammy, thank you. You had mentioned Devarti and Colleen and Rita and Kristi. It's just everything that you do, all the work that you do at the Carver County Fair. Thank you for all that. And then the dairy and the beef expo that happens every February out in Norwood, Young America. It just gives people a great opportunity to come and get a feel for what's happening in the ag community within Carver County. So, great job.
Other comments? Commissioner Udoman.
We had a chance to talk, and I was surprised that the Extension does work ad hoc work, including exploring the potential for economic development through tourism. And you've done so with Scott County and City of Chaska and other places. If we went down that path, we took a first next step to about the book, so that's coming as a resource for us. But if we were to do that, is that outside of this MOU? Is it a tack on, or is it all included?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Udoman. So if you were to look at a partnership with the Department of Community Development, that would be an additional, it would be an additional program agreement. But since we do have a partnership already existing with the county, it definitely makes it a more seamless process. And based on what the county is asking for, what the community is asking for, that kind of goes into a conversation about, you know, what are the fees for service, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Lynch.
I'd just like to come, you know, we've sat on here for quite some time, and so we see firsthand 1,478 youth in 10 clubs. That's quite impressive. And not only that, but then the master gardeners. And one thing she didn't mention is all the hours donated by the master gardeners. It's just absolutely astounding. It makes this county look absolutely beautiful. With that, if there's no other comments, I would move approval, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lynch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion? I'd just like to mention, yeah, Extension has changed a lot. I guess I was involved with Extension without even knowing it. I mean, the county agent came out years ago. Didn't look like the Extension educators that we have today, but it was a county agent at that point. And then I was involved in 4H, and I didn't realize at that time that 4H was part of Extension. But that's how some of us learned parliamentarian, how to run a meeting, talks, speeches. I can still remember my very first talk at a 4H meeting. It was on health. Back in the days, we had to choose a topic. And my mother, of course, our mothers too, they kind of helped to do this. And she had a poem. And the poem went something like, "A clean white tub and soap I see, a clean white towel that's just for me. If I get in and rub, 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 will I be clean just like the tub?" And that was my health speech. I mean, that was at about three or four, or third grade. And like I say, it gave you the experience of getting in front of people, talking, and then you learn from your siblings and other members of 4H how to run a meeting. And Extension has taught me a lot. So, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion in front of us. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Tammy, keep up the good work.
You do that poem again? I forget.
I don't know what made me think of that. Okay, item 3.2, HHS Behavioral Health Mental Health Crisis Service. Heather, take it away.
Good morning, Board Chair Dagler. Commissioner, I don't know how I follow up, the poem about the tub. I'm like, that's some pretty big shoes to fill here, but I'll do my best. Richard and I will share the presentation today. I do want to send my regrets that Stephanie Combe, our Clinical Behavioral Health Manager, couldn't join us today. She'd had a family member pass in the person's funeral today. So she is there instead prioritizing that time with family. So we will do our best to pivot and cover what she would normally cover for our presentation today. So I do want to thank you for this opportunity to present. As you'll remember, we presented about this topic two weeks ago at the December 3rd work session. Today, we will again provide a brief overview of the statutory requirements for the program and share a review of the events that have led us to reevaluate our system. We will be requesting today approval to shift our delivery model to be sustainable and fiscally responsible and still be responsible, still be responsive, excuse me, to the community. And with that, I'll shift it to Richard.
Welcome, Mr. Scott, Dr. Scott.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'd be amiss, but I also have a comment about the value of Extension. One of my favorite quotes is when you plant a garden, not only does it feed your body, but it also feeds your soul. And planting a garden means that you believe in tomorrow. So thank you for the work that our Extension Service has done. Again, just wanted to present some of this information. You may recall that we had a chance to share with you on December 3rd, but we felt it was important to present some of this again for the community and also for you as background to support our recommended motions that we'll state later in the presentation. The Carver County Mental Health Services Program is currently required to provide services 24/7/365 to both Carver and McLeod County by qualified licensed mental health professionals in a variety of community, residential, and institutional and hospital settings. These services include a lot, and I'd like to name some of them. They include telephone consultation, crisis intervention, diagnostic assessments, evaluation of the risk to self and others, intervention with severe child and parent conflicts, therapeutic interventions, consultation with community providers, disposition planning, coordination of out-of-home placement, including psychiatric hospitalization if necessary, and the coordination of crisis intake appointments, referrals, and follow-up services. We've been providing telephonic and mobile mental health crisis services in Carver County since 1983. We expanded that to include 24/7 in 2003. The crisis program is certified as a mobile crisis team by the Minnesota Department of Human Services, and services are subject to the requirements of Minnesota Statute 256B, Minnesota Statute 245I, and other statutes relating to both mental health services and emergency services. Funding has consisted primarily of grant dollars, contracts, third-party earned revenue, and county levy. And the program, when fully staffed, currently consists of 20.5 FTEs. Five of those FTEs, though, have been vacant for some time. With that, and also just a few other things. Recent changes in contracted services will greatly impact our capacity and funding streams to provide mental health crisis services. And I will defer to Heather to speak more about that at this time.
Very good, thanks, Richard. We're here today in response to a set of events that were impactful to the workload and finances of our crisis program. The first one, Carver County received a notice of non-renewal from Ridgeview Medical Center that is resulting in a significant workload reduction and financial loss of revenue. Again, this was received to Carver County from Ridgeview Medical Center, not the other way around. We were also notified by the state of Minnesota that Carver County will no longer be a 988 Suicide Lifeline Call Center. Again, that was a notification given to us by the state of Minnesota, forcing us and really leading us with both of these events to look at sustainability of our program as it exists today and looking at the decrease of dollars and loss of workload. Third event is McLeod County has taken a look at, as you'll both know, and Richard just alluded to, two of the five vacant therapist positions that have been vacant since April are positions that were assigned to McLeod County. So we have not really, since early spring, had those positions. Someone in those positions do the work. So McLeod County will be looking at taking those dollars from the state back and kind of reworking and recreating the program for themselves. So we will no longer, Carver County will no longer provide those crisis services for McLeod County in most of 2025. Impact of that, again, the hospital contract. Oh, I have that with your slide, sorry, Richard. Yeah, take yours out, sorry. Sorry, mixing up pieces of paper here. So with that, I mean, we, some of the crux of the issue really is, I mean, we really are going to lose 2/3 of our workload. That significant loss of work with, coupled with the requirement that the state still does say we have to run a 24/7 365-day program. The real, the challenge with that is, as you still need to staff those shifts, but with 2/3 workload reduction, we don't have workload and work to replace that work that either would generate the revenue we would need to sustain the program and also the workload we would need to keep staff, you know, busy and working 24 hours a day for all of these shifts. So that really is, really at the crux, you know, at this point, we are really looking at, since the call volume will not come in and we will not have revenue to cover the loss, what we're left with is the crisis grant from the state. We will still have that, and I'll show that on a slide a little bit later when we get into the funding. We will still have those dollars left, and we will still have the, some of the grant funding for community-based work, and we will lose some revenue, but we'll still have work to do some of the pieces in the jail as part of that grant. So we have a little revenue left, but we don't have enough revenue left to leave the program sitting today as it exists.
Before you move on for that slide, just want, anybody listening or watching might have heard part of this and the whole thing. 988 Suicide Lifeline Call Center, that call, that 988, that line is still available for anybody to call.
Hundred percent, yes. That service will still be provided. Yes, none of these services are going away.
That's just why I wanted to make sure that somebody, if they have a crisis.
If you have.
988 is still on the phone.
Yes, sir. If you have a crisis, if you are at risk of suicide, please call 988. That line exists today, it will continue to exist tomorrow. The state is pivoting and shifting their model, and they just are making a decision that Carver County will no longer be a provider for that service, but there will be someone else, a different provider, answering those calls. So thank you, sir, I appreciate the clarification.
Just building again on what Heather said, some of the operational challenges that we've been experiencing, recruitment and retention of licensed mental health professionals has been a consistent challenge for many years. That hasn't been a recent issue, that's been many years. And since May of this year, however, the program's had at least five therapist vacancies that have gone unfilled, like I referenced earlier. And this has created a significant challenge on current staff and leadership to cover the full extent of statutory mandates and program and grant requirements and expectations. The crisis programs are designed to operate on what is often referred to as an ambulance model. Responders are expected to respond in times of crisis. The challenge is that grant funding is not sufficient to cover this model and meet all the statutory expectations as laid out in Minnesota Statute 256B. And as such, we are dependent on third-party revenue, additional grants, and levy funding. Current county staffing vacancies, challenges related to recruitment and retention, and lack of flexibility has created increasingly unsurmountable challenges to providing sustainable services to meet our statutory and grant requirements for service. Next slide. This slide represents the data related to the anticipated challenges and service demand that both Heather and I have referenced. As stated earlier, the RMC or the Ridgeview Medical Center contract, we anticipated a 64% decrease in assessments and a significant decrease... and a significant, uh, uh, decrease in the call volume related to those assessments. So this just provides some of the data and the homework and the vetting that we had done to come up with our understanding of our current situation and therefore leading to our recommendations.
Very good. Thanks, Richard. And, uh, just for the county board's reference, I mean, you've seen these slides. They were in the work session. We've done some updates to them to just, um, ensure the language is really clear and the data is really clear for not only you at the board, but for everyone else to reference. So, um, this is one of the slides that we have done some updates to, to just make it very clear. Um, but, but the data has not, uh, changed significantly, and we still continue to highlight the four areas that we had on the, on the slides during the work session. Uh, most significantly, the McLeod, uh, crisis grant, um, obviously, again, as I've already shared, that revenue will go away. Uh, we are seeing, uh, and expecting a pretty significant, uh, loss in, um, earned revenue. And again, this would be if the board would decide to not eliminate the FTEs and would want to keep this program continuing it as is with the 20.5 FTEs. We would, we would see the loss in revenue. We would see the hospital contract go away. We would see the insurance payments reduce. And so what we are left with, and that number hasn't changed, um, is the 705,000, uh, amount of additional levy that would be needed to sustain the program and the 20.5 FTEs. Again, with less workload, you know, so there wouldn't, there would not be as much to do, but we would have, we would retain those staff and those FTEs, but we would need an additional, um, local levy to be able to sustain the program. Uh, because as it sits today with this loss of revenue, we, uh, we would not be able to sustain the program within the HHS budget and be able to fiscally afford, um, to continue to operate the program without assistance. This is not something I'm recommending. I, I do not believe that kind of number, that kind of revenue loss is sustainable uh, for us to be able to, um, sub, kind of subsidize the program year after year. Um, and honestly, my even, even more so than the revenue loss, my concern is the lack of workload um, and the fact that we would have FTEs who would not have, um, substantial, sustainable work. And also I'll move us into our, what is our recommendation, uh, which is to, and I will bring that forward, um, later in a motion. Uh, but our, we have vetted through and looked at providers. Uh, there are some other providers out there, but, uh, Canvas Health is, is, Canvas Health is one of the larger providers. Uh, one of the reasons that they were attractive to us is that they do have a bigger bench. They are a larger system that we are able to leverage and be able to, they are able to guarantee to us that they can provide that 24/7 365 coverage, which is what I know is critical uh, for the residents in the, in the community in Carver County. For, for those folks who make those calls, for those folks who need those assessments, that they have a provider who is able to respond and has enough bench, and as Richard's already shared, um, regarding our vacancies, is able to staff that. And, and again, this would be a contract, so they would be responsible for that, that they would staff that and they would provide this service. Many times now, we, we do not have, um, adequate staffing and, and it is a burden. And so that is, that has been a long-term problem. That hasn't, that's not a recent problem. That's not a new problem. Uh, but it is, this is, that, this is a solution to that problem. Um, so Canvas, um, they would be, um, one, just they, they will provide the community-based, uh, crisis assessments. Again, they will use, as you see at the top line, they will utilize that grant that we received from the state to be able to, uh, cover those costs. Uh, they will be triaging calls that are not crisis, so as folks are calling, just saying, hey, I'm struggling. I might need, you know, I'm looking for this resource. I need some help with this. Things that aren't an emergency, they will triage those calls, um, and help point folks in the right direction. Um, and then they are going to do and will be able to do crisis assessments in our jail, um, in our JDC, which is also, um, part of our jail. Uh, one piece that I think will be, um, nice with Canvas is they, um, they will, we will be providing them an office here at the government center, um, so they will be on site, um, so they will have local folks here in the building um, that will be able to go over to the jail to provide assessments. Will be able to, uh, go out into the community to provide assessments and certainly take phone calls. Um, again, um, just to reiterate, uh, to Board Chair Dagler's point, um, the crisis services that, that support the, for the county, for the community are not going away. Again, what Carver County is looking at doing with Health and Human Services as recommending is that we pivot from providing that in-house, um, to going with a contracted vendor for that. And again, uh, for us, what we see is a sustainable system is really leveraging a larger system that is able to really come in and be able to provide. And Carver County is, is a decent, we're a middle-sized county, but we're not a big enough county that we're really able to do a 24/7 365 day program. Once we, once what I feel we would need to do would be right-size to match the funding we receive. And once, if we have to reduce FTEs and reduce our workforce to, to match the funding, we don't have enough depth in the bench to run the program 24/7 365. Again, our goal with this is to, to provide a service that's sustainable, it, that it's available, and that it's cost-effective. And I'll let Richard talk a little bit more about Canvas Health, and I do want to share, um, I have a quote from the sheriff over at Scott County that, uh, I'm going to share as well, that, um, is in addition to your comments, Richard.
Yeah, we thought it, we thought it'd be helpful to provide some background on Canvas Health that supports our decision to recommend contracting with them for the provision of our mental health crisis services in Carver County. Uh, Canvas Health is a nonprofit community mental health agency providing mental health and substance use disorder services to individuals of all ages, regardless of their ability to pay. And they serve over, well over 8,000 individuals in 2023. And 64% of their clients served are uninsured, underinsured, underserved, high-risk, or are a member of the special, um, uh, have special needs, uh, in some way or other. So clearly, they've been seeing many of the same type of clientele that we have often served as well here. Over the course of 55 years, Canvas has served as a community mental health center for Washington County and then expanded to provide mental health substance use treatment and social services in Washington, Anoka, Pine, Kanabik, Malax, Shisago, Isanti, Scott, Penopan, and Wright Counties. Carver, uh, Canvas Health became a certified community behavioral health clinic in 2022, which enables them to expand services and improve access and receive additional funding to support their work with targeted clients. In 2004, it launched their adult and children's mobile mental health crisis service, and they currently provide these services in Scott, Anoka, Shisago, Isanti, Kanabik, Pine, Malax, um, and, and the Malax Band of Ojibwe. They also happen to provide, um, suicide prevention services in 57 counties, four communities within Dakota County. They're involved in over 45 schools across the state. Um, and they, and over half of their services are provided in homes, businesses, jails, or other locations. And they also have seven clinics where they see clients in a clinic setting. Canvas Health has a strong history partnering with law enforcement, schools, hospital systems, and county health and human services organizations. They also provide suicide prevention and regional coordination services, like I alluded to, on behalf of the Minnesota Department of Health, and also an active member in a host of other professional organizations and networks. So just a little background, obviously, we have a whole string of quotes. It sounds like you're going to be referencing one um, about the value that they provide to clients.
Yeah, I just wanted to share because this is actually from, um, the Scott County Sheriff, uh, Luke Cannon. He had, um, shared this and, and just thought it was of value. As you know, um, Canvas provides, uh, service in quite a number of Minnesota counties, but Scott County being our closest and our neighbor. Um, so just wanted to share his quote. Uh, it says, "The sheriff, sheriff's office collaborates with non-law enforcement resources to address needs in our community that arise from public or mental health needs. This includes a partnership with Canvas Health, our in-house mobile crisis team. This team uses a collaborative approach among law enforcement and public health resources to address complex situations involving persons in mental health crises, not only to avoid dangerous escalations in a law enforcement response, but also to help provide long-term resources to some of the most vulnerable and complex members of our community." Canvas Health's Scott County Mobile Crisis Team is embedded in the Scott County Government Center and partners with law enforcement. Um, so again, just because I, obviously, I have a great respect for, um, not only our sheriff, but, um, the sheriff's offices that we work with, um, and just wanted to share his quote, um, as a closing remark. And with that, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve a reduction of 20.5, uh, full-time equivalent positions in the HHS Behavioral Health. Um, and I have sent an attachment A that is part of your packet. Uh, so, uh, for commissioners' benefit, if you, um, have not looked at that, uh, that does give the detail of the FTEs. Um, and then my motion too is to approve a professional service agreement with Canvas Health that would be effective January 1st with a full rollout, um, and implementation July 1st, um, and then a contract period through December 31st, 2026. Uh, and it is still going through our internal contract review, um, with risk and, and, uh, the county attorney's office at this time. With that, I will.
Any questions? I think we'll start with some questions from the board, if they have any. And then before we ask for a motion, I think it's been, I think it'd be prudent, the fact that, I think, I have. I figured everybody else has received a number of emails from various people expressing their opinions on, uh, proposed action and the, the, the work that the crisis team has done. So I will open it up for anybody from the audience to at least, uh, let us know what you're thinking. So I'll ask the board. Any questions for Heather or Dr. Scott? Seeing none at this point.
Sure. Can I just give a quick clarification on page 98? Of your packet.
Page 98, you said?
Yeah, that, that's not called Attachment A, but that's what we're referring to as Attachment A.
That's what I figured out. Right.
Okay.
Everybody know what you got, what Mr. Hemsey's talking about?
Thank you, Administrator.
Yeah. Okay, uh, for this point, I think I'll just open it up now. Uh, if nobody has any questions from the board, we'll open it up for anybody that wants to say a few words, uh, regarding this proposed action. Yep, please. Come up to the microphone, identi-, yes. That way. What?
Okay. August 7th, 2021.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm Sydney. Um, I'm a member of the community. I've been a member of the community for a very long time. This is going to be very emotional for me, so.
Take a deep breath, y'all.
Um, but I would like to start with August 7th, 2021. My husband and I were celebrating my new job. I had been laid off a few weeks prior. A frozen pizza was in the oven. We had, we were in the middle of a cheers. And suddenly, there was a loud bang. Our rental home shook, and I saw from the living room window of our house that it was on fire. I ran to the back of the house to grab a hose, and when I stepped outside, I saw things that no person should ever witness. A small private plane containing three passengers had crushed, crashed in our front yard. Amidst the chaos, my husband was able to get me to the paramedics to help treat me for shock. Before we left to stay at a safe home, my husband asked the paramedics if they could recommend somewhere I could get help. They told us immediately about the Carver Crisis Team. We reached out to the team, and we were met by kindness, understanding, a group of people whom I trusted completely in a safe place. They were a breath of fresh air when I was drowning. The next year of my life was a living hell, as my husband and I picked up the pieces of our minds and tried to rebuild some semblance of normalcy. We couldn't leave our rental until we had enough money to buy a home of our own. So every day for an entire year, we lived in that hell. The crisis team was there for us every step of the way, cheering us on as we made progress, holding our hands through the lowest lows imaginable. There were points I couldn't live inside of my own mind, driving home every day to my house, still burnt. I contemplated suicide many times that year, but having the crisis team available to me at any time was something that kept me alive. I can speak that Kelly sat in our front porch with us and helped us just live in our home every single day. As time moved on, I've sent them updates on our milestones. Things got a little bit easier. Hey, we got our first house. Look, we got a puppy. Josh and I are out in Colorado. We got married. All have been met with support and cheers. I couldn't imagine if I had to call the crisis, a crisis center of any kind to ask for help and to discuss my insurance on a sliding scale, or I don't have insurance right now. I, I don't know what I'm going to do to pay you for help. Reaching out for help when you feel like giving up is nearly impossible, why would you add such an embarrassing step to the process? This world is hard enough it is, as it is. Please don't take such a vital resource away from the community. This is just my story amongst many. I know these people have poured their hearts and souls into every individual that they've helped throughout the years.
Very well said. Congratulations on the marriage and the new house.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Josh Miller. Congratulations on your retirement. Um, I don't want to be here today. I don't want to be here, and I feel like I shouldn't have to be, because I'm supposed to be at work right now, which is why I'm dressed a little different than everybody else here.
Very acceptable, though.
You already heard from my wife this morning. Uh, I'd like to give you a little bit of what our experience looked like from my perspective. As clear as I can remember, which really isn't that clear, it started with a big house shaking bang. My then fiance, now wife, running to me and saying, Josh, I think our house is on fire. That made this the second property I've lived in that has started on fire by reasons having nothing to do with me. But I felt like, uh, that put me in a good place to be prepared on how to deal with what I was going to step out to. Uh, I was not. I stepped out onto the front porch to a desk to assess the damage and devise an action plan. And as I crossed the threshold of my front door, looking for the source of the fire, I came across something I didn't expect that would become a defining image that would be one that would shape probably the rest of my life. One that thankfully has dulled over time, in large part to the help I received from the Carver County Crisis Team. I don't want to get graphic, but I'm gonna get a little graphic, because while my experience is extraordinary, the result of it is anything but. Most euphemistic way I've found to describe what I went through is I saw the top half of a guy was about eight feet from the threshold of my door. He was on fire, and of all the memories that the crisis team helped me bury, the smell has remained. The other prominent memory I have that the crisis team has been able to dull is my wife screaming, he's dead. What do we do? He's dead. Oh, my God. It's not much advantage in explaining the rest of what we went through that day or the weeks and months that would come after, but I thought it'd be valuable to set a marker down as to the mental state I was in when I asked the paramedics who I could call to tend to the mental health of my wife, not realizing that I was at the time also in shock. I remember finding the paramedics asking if they could help her, not wanting to burden them, and their response being a very tired and exasperated look, and almost deflated. There's really not much else for us to do here. Knowing exactly what that meant, and exactly what that meant they had already seen in the parts of my yard that I hadn't been to yet, uh, maybe I kind of feel bad for those guys, but the Carver County Crisis Team is there for them too. So why am I here? If this motion had passed four years ago, and I had to navigate a phone tree, see what type of sliding scale I would qualify for, maybe I wouldn't be here. I cannot sing the praises of what the crisis team has done for me and my wife loudly enough. I'm guessing that the mayhem that was the weeks following that unbelievable chapter of my life, I'd probably quietly resign to myself, or to my lot in life as a guy who probably could have afforded to buy some insurance on the ACA, but was feeling poor at the time and tried to mess around on the computer and found it complicated and just didn't do it. And I'd have thought that my difficulty navigating this phone tree and not having insurance, that maybe my mental state was what I deserved for the choices that I had made. I would have neglected myself. I would have probably ruined my relationship, and I probably wouldn't be here with my wife today. Another thing I can tell you is that my hands would still shake. Every time a plane passed overhead or a rickety truck hit a speed bump a little too fast, or fireworks on the Fourth of July, my hands would be shaking. I mean, they're shaking a little bit today, but not used to speaking in front of people.
You're doing a great job.
I'm here because I, I don't think if you're too poor or even just miss a deadline because you're a working-class person with a working-class schedule, that you deserve to have your hands shake when they don't have to. I'm here because I live in a county with a large enough tax base that it's ridiculous to me that we're trying to squeeze this little piece of good that is available to every working-class person to give those better, uh, to, to give that money to a non-local group. money to a non-local group that would like me to navigate what I can only assume is gonna be some type of AI-powered phone tree, have a Zoom call with somebody from outside my community rather than have a person drive to my parents' house in East Union where I'm staying while I'm waiting for the blood to get cleaned off of my house and sit on their deck with me and my wife and just listen to us cry. Mostly I'm here because I just want everybody who's already decided the way they're gonna vote on this motion to just look me in the eye and say that if you're gonna vote for it, that maybe people like me should, should have our hands shake when they hear a loud truck or a plane flying overhead. Thank you for your time. I've gotta get back to work. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. Your time and your story hang on to your wife. Anybody else?
Thank you Commissioner. My name is Tammy McCarthy. I am a licensed clinician on the crisis team. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Public speaking is not in my wheelhouse, anywhere near my wheelhouse, so have mercy on me. I wanna share just some of the important differences between Canvas Health and our current crisis team. Differences that you're gonna want to be aware of. When a citizen in Carver County is having a mental health crisis, we at this time have fully licensed, trained mental health professionals with decades of experience who will respond face to face, usually within the hour. Canvas will offer to schedule a crisis assessment with you. Either that day or maybe the following day. So if you're in crisis, you should plan accordingly. Their crisis responders are recent graduates or mental health practitioners in training. They're not fully licensed professionals that we have to offer. Some of the important differences are, we have fully trained professional phone people. They will check at least three sites. Three different sites to check into the person's background, their criminal history, their mental health history and whether or not they have current county services. These are important for responders. This is important information for us to know. And they check into it for us before they dispatch us. Our clinicians have had years of building collaborative relationships with local law enforcement, with school social workers and therapists, with our local hospitals, with First Street Center and with the Veterans Service Officers. Our clinicians are able to schedule our clinicians are able to schedule clients with rapid access psychiatry, with rapid access therapy. Julie, our healthcare navigator. If we meet with clients that are uninsured, we talk to Julie. Julie will meet with them either that day or the next and they will, she helps them get on insurance. We don't set up payment plans on for our services. Nobody's been charged for our services. We don't put them on a sliding scale. We don't set up payment plans. Julie also will meet with clients and help them fill out the paperwork for our rapid access psychiatry. She will call them to remind them of their appointments. If there's transportation barriers, Julie's been known to pick them up, drive them to their appointments. This is the important differences in our local services. We also have Lori, our stabilization therapist. She follows up with these clients that we meet with who, you know, maybe their therapy appointment's a week out, but they need someone to talk to in between before they get to there. Lori will help them get into treatment. If they need treatment, Lori's been there for them to help them navigate that important step. These are just a few of the important differences that between the quality of services offered by Canvas and the quality of service offered by our crisis team. Before you make this decision, it might be worth a call to say Washington County. Washington County contracted with Canvas. For years, they contracted with Canvas. And it would be important to know why they took back their program, why they no longer work with Canvas. It might be worth a call to Scott County to find out why they took back their crisis services during the day. Scott County answers the daytime crisis calls. Canvas does apparently cover the evening hours. This is an important decision for you to make. I'm asking you to keep in mind the residents of this county when you make this important decision. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm Kelly Wilkinson, crisis therapist with the Carver County Team. I brought some things to share with you guys. There was an online petition that was started to just gain awareness and educate the community about the potential chance of this being outsourced. And I feel like I have the duty to make sure that their voices are heard. I know that, you know, leadership have seen the, the petition and things like that, but I, I wanna make sure that their voices are heard. First off, I have about eight hundred signatures from people that have supported and felt it was important for the service to stay within the county system. Next, I have several emails that was, that were sent to our crisis team in support of us, teachers, case managers, social workers, people from the public writing and talking about the importance of keeping the crisis team as is in the county. Next, I have some comments. And these are comments that people provided on the petition. I want to highlight some of them in here. There is one comment on here that I think is incredibly important. There is an individual named Hayden who said, I can honestly say I would not be here today without the Carver County Crisis Team. They got me through the hardest time of my life and having local care for an immediate response was incredibly helpful. Having a crisis team that I knew and I trusted, who I could call when I was in crisis, was life-saving. Asking for their help would not have been possible if I had to pay out of pocket. I'm so grateful for the Carver County Crisis Team. Clara says, I worked in group homes and in some situations had to call nine-one-one and when a local crisis team was dispatched, the situation quickly de-escalated. Clients did not feel threatened but supported. It created pathways to treatment and charging individuals for these services is not the long-term solution or answer. Barbara says, the elimination of a crisis team seems to be in direct opposition of what has come to be considered a best practice. Please rethink this proposal. Julie says, as an experienced county worker who, who works with many private agencies, I can attest that private agencies do not provide the same quality of care that county workers do. Private agencies set up rules of who, when, and how they will provide services and there is very little oversight on the services provided. I'm particularly concerned about the possibility that a private agency could charge for service. This will be a barrier to care. Privatizing, privatizing social services is a bad plan. A lot of we've spent a lot of time thinking about this and, and looking at it and trying to figure out ways that we can change the team or whatever. We have not been invited or involved in any of those discussions, which is disheartening since we are the ones that respond twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. We have clinicians in the room who sleep with their work phone right beside them. And if they got a call in the middle of the night, off they go to help. And it's those calls in the middle of the night that need that response, that need somebody who is licensed, fully licensed and experienced. I don't think you want a certified peer specialist responding to one of those situations in the middle of the night or things like that. This is so much more than finances. It is, it's so much more than that. And to blame it on finances when Carver County is one of the most affluent counties in the state seems I, like, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm it seems like a convenient excuse, quite honestly. We've never been given the chance to look at how we could change the team. When the situations occurred that lot, that created this financial crisis, there wasn't any conversation about how we could change our model, how we could change the team. It was just, let's just go to Canvas Health. Carver County says that mental health is one of their biggest priorities. Carver County says that having a community that is safe and happy and healthy is one of their big, biggest concerns. It's one of your priorities. Going with a contract outside of the county adds barriers that just don't need to be there when it's hard enough already. And I, I firmly believe, I mean, we have had staff shortages with our Carver County salary and the benefits and para, right? We've had those openings at least for the last three, four years where we've had multiple therapist openings. I don't know how we think that car, that a contracted agency who will pay less and not have as good of benefits is going to magically fill the spots that we haven't been able to. I don't know how, how we think that's going to happen. And leaving this to, we're gonna contract it out, it just, it doesn't seem to be what the Carver County community deserves because then we can just pass it off on, well, it's a contract. You know, we can't help it if Canvas Health can't get staff. And you're going to leave your residents in in a crisis. And I firmly believe that this is a choice that you're not going to realize the ramifications of until it's done. And it will be the most vulnerable citizens of Carver County that will pay the price for this. And we don't wanna see that happen at all. So I urge you guys to really think about this. I hope that you guys did call people and ask or talk to other people, do your own research. I, I really hope you did, like I urged you to do two weeks ago. I just, I think it would be a travesty if this was voted yes on, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
I don't mean to limit people, but I just wanna make sure everybody is heard, but.
Hi, my name's Stacy Wedding. I did not come prepared with a speech, but after hearing my colleagues talk and community members, I felt it was prudent for me to say something. I am a clinician on the team. I'm a licensed professional clinical counselor and a certified clinical trauma professional. I've been on the team since twenty sixteen when we were partnered with Scott County. And I considered leaving the team to be a supervisor with Canvas. However, I was not satisfied with what Canvas was offering me, so I sticked, I stuck with Carver County and I actually was a, an STOC employee at the time. And then in twenty twenty, I became full-time actually to serve McLeod County. So I was a full-time McLeod County, serving McLeod County. And within, as the trends changed and staffing changes, there was more demand for me to be in Carver County. So technically in August, my job description changed from being Carver primary, McLeod secondary. So even as we speak, it sounds like we're not serving McLeod County. I'm actually still going out to McLeod County, serving those residents and providing stabilization services. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone while still serving the residents of Carver County and the rest of my team. But back to what I was trying to say is with my position, not only am I providing, have I been providing crisis services and crisis stabilization, I've also with McLeod and even within Carver, I've been doing a lot of program development, developing relationships with community partners and other stakeholders. And I would hate to lose the relationships that I've built with those school, social workers, with the law enforcement in McLeod County and the other, and with McLeod County itself. And to learn that I'm losing those partners coming April first is really disheartening, so. And now the fact that my position could be dissolved is really hurt you because I've, for the last almost nine years, put my heart into this crisis work. And I'm sorry I'm becoming emotional because this is a really hard time for me because I care so much about what I do and I don't want people to lose out on the work and the care that we've been providing all these years. So thank you.
Well, thank you. You couldn't have done it better if you had prepared. So very good. Please.
My name's Jason Timian. I'm a resident of Carver County. I will say I was a little disheartened. I attempted to meet with the commissioners as a longtime homeowner in Carver County and that, that request was denied. I, I don't, I don't really know why, because again, I live here. My fiance, soon be wife, we own a home here. We were unable to even meet with commissioners because it was considered an ER issue. I'm not understanding how this motion is in any way related to employee relations, but that's just my opinion. What I do wanna focus on real quick is I, I, I hope that you guys fully appreciate what having unlicensed clinical trainees responding to the county will be like. You don't have to take my word for it. Actually, you can go on, on the Canvas Health website right now and you can look at how many licensed professionals they have versus how many clinical trainees or practitioners they have. You can see that the vast majority of responses would be done by unlicensed professionals. In my almost six years here, I've done a number of transportation holds. For those that aren't familiar, it is our job to determine if somebody is either an imminent risk to them- imminent risk to themselves based on suicidality or homicidality, or if they are delusional, disconnected from reality to the point that their decisions could cause harm to themselves or others. Those holds, so we work with Chaska PD, we work with the Sheriff's Department, are done in person. I don't have any idea how you would do that via telehealth. And we are there to advocate for those citizens. I know that there's a hesitancy with the statutes, the sheriff, I'm sure would speak to that, Chaska PD chief, about, sorry, the police chief, about use of force. I understand that. However, what I wanted to make clear is that because of our experience and our ability and our familiarity with doing this, I have put literally hundreds of people on holds. There have been zero injuries, zero issues with that. Where, because of our experience and our knowledge, we are able to de-escalate the situation to the point, the vast majority of time that we were able to get the community member into the ambulance of their own free will without even needing paramedics or anyone to intervene. There are exceptions, but I hope you understand the exceptions have always been when they are homicidal and in the interest of everyone's safety, sometimes other things need to be done. The vast majority of the time, because we are able to develop that rapport, we know the responding officers, we know the responding deputies, they know who I am. We are able to talk these things out and come to a resolution that's in the best interest of everyone involved. And I think that is something that you will lose, having high turnover clinical trainees who technically can do holds if they call a supervisor and give permission. I know that I would never do that myself. I supervise clinicians quite a bit. I would never, I would never have somebody that I'm, do something under my direction if I don't actually have all of the information. I don't think that's fair to anyone. But that is, that is technically in state statute, the only way that an unlicensed person can do a transport hold. I just, I, I wanted to reiterate what we'd be losing by going to this other model. In addition, not everything was, was brought forward with crisis stabilization. That is something that Lori does full-time. She's been here over 20 years, doing wraparound services, meeting the people where they're at, providing them everything you can think of, not just therapy, not just psychiatry, but access to food shelves, access to chemical dependency treatment, access to housing, any, any kind of wraparound service that you can think of, we are able to help them do. In addition, because we're a government entity, we can, we can look into databases that private entities are not allowed, do not have access to, sorry, and see where their case management, where their providers are, and we can make direct contact with them and make sure that everything is followed up on. We also have, we also have great relationships with the pre-petition screeners. They're the ones that screen people for mental health commitments. They use our assessments, and they, if they were here, they'd tell you the same thing. In fact, I'm pretty sure they sent you emails also supporting the crisis team. They use our assessments in order to do those commitments. And we are able to help facilitate these things much faster than any type outside agency would ever be able to do. So I just want you to understand that while, yes, this solution that is being proposed will technically meet the statute and Carver County will meet the statute on paper, the, the damage that's going to be done to the community response, as well as what the residents of Carver County will be losing, is much higher than I think that you're able to fully comprehend with the information that we have. And I'm afraid that once the decision is made, it'll be very difficult to take back. Washington County did. They eliminated, they eliminated the Canvas and they actually took back their own crisis team. But it was, it was much more difficult because you have to build from scratch. You'd have to rehire everyone. You'd have to restructure the entire program. And I know that they, they know that it was, it was very difficult. And if you're, again, if you're interested, the Star Tribune even wrote an article about why Washington County took it back. There is a huge number of calls to Canvas Health for a response and a very tiny amount of responses. And that's one of the reasons they took it back. So on paper, they'll say that they can respond, but in practice, they've proven that they do not. Thank you for your time.
Hello?
Morning.
I also came unprepared, but I guess it's my turn.
No, it's fine.
So my name's Jessica Gettle. I live in Hamburg, rural. I just wanted to share, so I started out part-time here two years ago on Halloween. And then I converted to STOC, so I'm primarily in the P-SOP, in the Sheriff's Office. So with that position, I get 67 shifts a year. I work 67 shifts a year. This year, Thanksgiving day after, I'll be working Christmas and Christmas Eve. You're welcome with, you know. I, I received a very cold...
Somebody's got to do it, so thank you for being that person.
Well, I'm glad you are thankful because I received a very cold letter that I'm...
Hopefully I won't need you, but, you know.
Well, I received a very cold letter that I'm only temporary, so because, so my temporary position is now gone. So that was very sad to have, you know, so much. I, I just felt that was very ungrateful. But again, I'm, I'm a Carver County resident. I have had to use this service myself. My niece is often actively suicidal. And my team, specifically Jason, responded to my niece and got her the care that she needed. She is alive today. And I'm grateful to my own team for that. They don't know that that was my niece because it was a conflict of interest, so I immediately announced that and took myself out of that. But I'm thankful to my team for that because my team can provide person-centered care to our residents. And that's not something that Canvas Health can do. My full-time job is with Hennepin County. I work all the time, face-to-face, providing that person-centered care. And I know how important that is to feel heard, to feel cared about, and to get that person-centered care. Not back in COVID when I was doing child protection and we had to do things over the phone, right? Nobody wants to talk to a phone. I'm just picturing somebody actively suicidal beating the crap out of a phone or out of a TV, right? They're not going to want to listen to you. We, we can do better, okay? Some other things that I do on the team is I find beds, psychiatric beds for people. When we are, when it's decided that our community members need in-person care and they can't go back home, I find them a bed. I search the, there's a website that I look on and I find beds that are in the state, starting as close to home as possible to eliminate any issues, you know, challenges with families trying to go and see their kids, right? The majority of the people that we serve are kids, you know, kids that who, they want to die. And we're able to meet with them in person. I can't tell you how many nights I've spent on the phone with farmers, right? They're losing their farms, their wife is dead, they're lonely, they don't want to be here anymore. The market, right? The market is crappy and they're actively suicidal, but because I gave them an hour...
It's a polite way of saying it.
Yeah, right? But I gave them my time, right? And I will spend hours on the phone. I can tell you of a time I let a guy, he said he wanted to drive off a bridge. I found out the next day that he made it to the emergency room. You know, those are things that Canvas can't do. These are things that I've personally done. Other things in the P-SOP that I've done, I've intervened, you know, if they find that there's a mental health crisis call, crisis call, then we take over those mental health calls and we're able to coordinate with them if needed. I've had to have law enforcement go find people because they said they're actively bleeding and stuff like that. But again, that's not something that Canvas can do. We work hand-in-hand with Carver County Mental Health, adult, children, child protection. We're able to do that, right? Because we don't need the releases of information. There's no time wasted there, right? With Canvas Health, we're going to have to wait for things to be signed, guardians, you know, powers of attorney and everything else to sign those. We have immediate response. And then just the last thing I just want to say is, as a member of Carver County, this is just such a disservice to me, to my neighbors, my family, and, and everybody else of the community that I know loves and respects. And I mean, this is, there's so much value in this team. Okay, please consider the value and the asset that Carver County alone, we have people crossing our county lines just to come see our Carver, our, our crisis team. You're right, we get calls all the time, 988. That's another line that I personally answer. And then, you know, it's like sometimes if they want to see somebody in person, well, are you a Carver County resident? Oh, I'm not, you know? So it's like, oh, can I drive over there and see you guys? Because theirs is crap. Excuse my language, but it's, it's not good, right? We are respected out there and people know how good our team is and they come and cross the borders just to see us in person because they need our service and I wish there was more of us around. So please, really look into, like my, my coworkers have said, do your own research. And if you guys have to, I mean, if anything, give us more time to restructure, right? It doesn't have to be a one and done here. Give us time. You know, if we all, I understand that we all can't stay, but I don't think getting rid of the entire team is the solution. Thank you.
Are you sure you didn't have that prepared?
I'm a social worker.
Okay. Other comments?
Thank you very much for your input. Back to the board. Any questions, comments? Thoughts? While you're thinking, I got to ask a question or two. What's the difference between being licensed, piece of paper, and/or, I forget even the wording, that specialist or something else? What's the difference in the, the training, the, the treatment that I'm going to receive? Heather, you have any response?
I do have a response. I mean, we certainly, and, and again, I just want to thank the staff for their comments and the community. I know those folks have left, but I just want to make it really clear, this isn't about performance in any way, shape, or form. I, I would concur that our, our staff do great work. This is about, we're losing two-thirds of our work. And so I, I just don't want to, I just want to make that clear. To answer your question, Board Chair, I mean, we do have, we do have licensed credentialed staff, our therapists and, and most of our social workers, but are, because of the hospital piece, one of the requirements of the hospital was that we have licensed credentialed staff that could be, that could work at, at the licensure level that was needed in the hospital. So we have always needed to require that level of staff. I would agree. Most, most staff, most programs, most models throughout the state have a mix of licensed staff and what I'll call like a clinical trainee, someone who is working toward their licensure and is, is in process of that and then is supervised by someone who is licensed until they get their license. I would say most programs have a mix of that. It's also how you, you know, recruit and brings up younger or newer staff to the business. I mean, as, as folks get their license in, in mental health and this business, they, they need to get their boots on the ground and experience somewhere, and that's why most models have a mix. We do not, and, and it was because of that hospital piece.
Another question that came up is, who pays? If I have a crisis, suicidal, whatever, call, who pays for the people to come out and take care of me or rush me to the hospital or do whatever they have to do?
I just want to make it clear, and why is this not working? Colin, is this not working? My, thank you, sorry. I just, I want to make it clear, because insurance was referenced a couple of different times, we do bill insurance for that work. And I'll show you on the slide, oop, this is the wrong slide, sorry, I'll move back one, where we have earned revenue by medical assistance and hos, insurance payments to, just a shade over $400,000. Is that not working? Oh, sorry, I thought it was working. So you can see, we have insurance payments currently over $400,000 and just a little over $50,000 in medical assistance. That is Carver County billing insurance for the work done by our crisis team.
And if the patient can't or doesn't have insurance?
Then, then we, then we don't take insurance and we don't, and we do that for free. I mean, that's part of the program. That's part of every program across the state. We, all, all programs bill insurance, including Carver County, we have as well. We, the difference and, and what, what's across the state is not done for crisis work because we don't want to create, create a barrier to crisis, is then we don't bill the person, the customer, the client. But we have always billed insurance. That is not, that is not something new.
If you listen to this, that they can get services, no matter if they have insurance or not.
We're, we're like the emergency room that way, where, I mean, you are served regardless. But when we can, we have always captured dollars and reimbursement from insurance. It's been one of the only ways we, this program's been sustainable, is by billing insurance. And so that, that is something not new. That's something that's been done for many, many years, even as the staff have done this work, we've billed insurance for that work.
And kind of an unusual question, how do you rate services? How do I know if I'm getting good service when I call somebody to come out if I'm in a crisis? How do I know if that's good service versus somebody else's, they doing it and trying to help me?
I, I would say in this, we have other types of business in, in health and human services that we rate service levels differently. I would say those are longer-term services where we, where we're able to do some of those metrics. This is, these are very short-term, kind of in and out, you know? I mean, these aren't, you know, with folks for years and years and years. And so a lot of it is on testimonial. And I know, Richard, if you have other thoughts, anything around data that's been gathered around quality of service for, for this? Because this is such a short-term acute service, customer kind of comments are the most common way that I'm aware of.
Okay, because I was just, you know, if I got a flat tire, I know somebody did a screwy job, I'd go back. But if I commit suicide, how do I know if it's bad service? Or if no matter, somebody else did it or attended to me, the result would have still been the same? There's no way to analyze that kind of stuff.
Well, and I, and I don't want to minimize this, you know? I would, I would say to the credit to the staff, you still could do really, really good service and someone still could commit suicide and could, could die from suicide. So I, I don't want to necessarily say that that's, you know, one kind of maybe necessarily is a, is a, you know, hard line to the other because those things happen.
Any other questions by board? Commissioner Lynch?
Well, I guess we're here because of actions that we didn't take. The first one would be the non-renewal by Ridgeview, then no longer becoming a 988 county. But still, you had a great point, that 988 is still available for anyone who wants to use it. We want to make sure that's very clear. We had the McLeod shift, so there's very little work. I don't know if this is for Administrator Heather, but Kid, the employees transferred to other jobs.
We, the current three that we are looking at that will potentially be ended at the end of this, two weeks here, the end of this month, have been offered reassignment. I think it's too early to speak to the rest because we have this phased implementation over six months. So I think that's something I'm working with employee relations on, we'll be talking with the unions about. I think it's just too early.
So that's, that was my next question, the restructure. It's too early to answer that question about a restructure? To have a partial, maybe we could do the, Scott County was referenced and we do the crisis during the calls during the day, then Canvas does it at night. Is that accurate?
I'm not aware of that. In fact, my last communication with Scott County was that they're actually enhancing and increasing their contract with Carver, with Canvas Health to help move them out to their new Behavioral Health Center, pending legislative some money. I don't know, after today's conversation with the legislators, I don't know if there'll be dollars, but they're hoping to build a larger, a pretty big footprint of a Behavioral Health Center out at their, their transit station off 169. And my understanding from Scott County is they're actually going to be expanding their contract with them.
And Washington County was referenced several times. Do you have any indication about what happened with Washington County?
They did bring that back in-house and sent, for lack of a better term, they essentially dissolved their crisis team and their, their crisis services are being done by their child protection staff. So their child, so we have a child and family team, our child protection workers, those same workers are the ones who do crisis services for Washington County. So they've really blended their child protection and their crisis team together as one team.
Other thoughts?
Trish, order it. Okay, I mean, it's, it's a hot topic, right? There's, there's real people, real needs, real solutions and real hard decisions that need to be made. And I think we as a, as a county have historically empowered our people managers to, to lead us down this path, and you've made your recommendation. But I want to zoom out first and then I'll zoom in. First, nobody's questioning that there's a need. That need is actually going up, it's not coming down. And if you look at the, the investments at the state level, they've, they've starved mental health investment and they've starved other areas. And so we just came out of AMC today where we had a lawmaker say there's, there's no more money. There was a big spending spree over the last couple of years because there was a surplus and none of that money came back in terms of the form of mental health. It's created some of these challenges that, that unfortunately, we as a board member, as a board, have to take on some of that because they're called unfunded state mandates. It's a tough job. And Heather said it, others said it. Those personal stories, they hit home, closer to home than some of us would maybe like to admit publicly. But we know that there's personal stories and so we take that in account as well. I, I sense that maybe there's a, a tone of we versus them. I don't want that to be the tone. We're one Carver County, we're one team. And the same thing with Canvas. If we end up going the path of Canvas, we're not perfect and they're not perfect and they're not going to be perfect. But I kind of look at it as a, as a we approach. And so I, I guess I want, I want that to be the tone, regardless of what flavor we end up with. The third thing is, is research. The third thing is, is research. You know, a couple of comments were made that the commissioners didn't respond. I can only speak for myself. I met with crisis team. I met with people and peers and had the opportunity, and that's one of the beauties of AMC, to talk to Washington County, to talk to Scott County, to talk to Hennepin County. And I will tell you that a lot of the things that they reflected, and those weren't public comments, they were private comments of my peers, other counties, did not echo what I heard today. I heard Scott County expanding their service with Canvas. I heard, I think it was over 50 counties that have used Canvas, and I don't know that 50 counties would use Canvas if they provided crap service. Is there opportunities? Absolutely. Is there opportunities for our staff? Absolutely. And so, I saw those. I also saw it and looked at the Star Tribune article that was referenced. I think I got a dozen emails. Everybody should have received a response from me that said I've acknowledged that I received it and I read it. The couple that was in here and spoke, that's real close to the district I represent, and there's a lot of personal things attached. I talked to state staff, and the things that was recurring with AMC was, is we need beds. We've known we've need beds for 25 years. We know there's an opportunity here, and the state's done close to nothing about it. And so, if there's anger for me, my anger is towards lawmakers over the course of 25 years for not addressing some of this stuff. And now, we're stuck with tough decisions, really tough decisions. And unfortunately, all the people in the room, makes a whole lot of sense, there's budgetary constraints as well. I have to answer to 27,000 constituents that say my taxes are too hard, high, I cannot afford to live here. And you have to balance their affordability of being here for a long time and the needs of crisis. And then, the fourth thing is the shift. I don't think that we're not doing these services. I think that we're simply proposing that we shift these services. There was something six months or a year ago where there was a rumor circulating around the community that we were going to stop these youth services, and it was the furthest thing from the truth. We actually were delivering those services. So, whether we deliver them as Carver County or they're delivered as Canvas, it's a shift. And I think a lot of our hand is being pressed by the state, again, I go back to. And then, the last thing is, is I support what Heather's brought forth, because it's not simple. And if there's staff listening in other divisions, we have a lot of tough decisions that we need to make in the next couple of years. It's not sustainable that CHAS has increased their taxes double digits each year for the last five years. It's not sustainable that we're at 6%, 7%, 8%, 9%, 10% once we pull a rabbit out of our hat. We have to look at those things as well. But one thing I would say is, and we've had these conversations as well, if it's the desire of the board to pursue this and to move towards Canvas as you're recommending, I would strongly support, as I did publicly the last meeting, and I've shared privately as well, I would strongly support that everybody on our staff give it a shot, give it a chance to be interviewed by Canvas. I would also propose that we are very intentional about if there was a bridge gap for at least 18 months. That if there's any wage disparity, I don't know that there is. I don't know if Canvas pays better or worse or the same. I don't know that. I know that they have 18 jobs posted right now. But I would propose that if we're going to do this, I make two enhancements. One is that our staff be given the shot at coming onboard with Canvas, and that we bridge any financial gap if we're able to do so for at least 18 months. Because there's real people, I mean, it sucks right now, we're in the midst of holidays, and that intensifies things. You know, whatever your financial situation or your personal situation is, and so, I just offer that. Those are my comments.
Other comments? Questions? Seeing none others, we have requested board action. Two different motions. We'll take them one at a time. I'm looking over it one at a time now. Motion number one. The board wanted to make the motion to approve the reduction of 20.5 full-time equivalent positions in HHS behavioral health according to Detachment A, which was identified as Page 98.
Mr. Chair, it's not a motion I enjoy making, but it's one that I take the recommendation of the team. I've heard everything, and I would move motion one. And then, out of ease, I'd move motion two as well, making one, two modifications, that staff be given every chance to interview with Canvas if that's a choice.
We'll take one at a time. Motion number one at this time. We have a motion by Commissioner Udoman. There are seconds. I'll second that. Any discussion on that motion? I think it's, the only discussion I'll have, it's kind of echoing what Commissioner Udoman mentioned. This isn't an easy decision. I mean, this isn't something a person does just to do it. No, this is a tough decision to make. So, that's my comment on motion number one. Commissioner Feighy?
Mr. Chair, just to that point, and we hear about the compassion and the stories and all the desire to do your job, and we truly appreciate the jobs that you do. And as on the board here and the tough decisions that we have to make, and then you look at the business, you look at the facts, and the loss of revenue, the contracts and the funding, you know, how can we continue? If we're going to continue to do a service at a huge loss, year after year after year, then, as Commissioner Udoman alluded to, when we're out at a community celebration and people are giving me an earful about, well, how can you be so irresponsible, John, with our tax dollars? And so, that's the other side of the coin for we as board members or commissioners. And who are we responsible to? You know, is it the taxpayer? Is it the levy? Is it the county employee? That's what we balance every day, and it's tough.
Echoing on that, not every commissioner responds to constituents and people the same way. If you gave me an email, I read it. Don't get the wrong idea. I read it, but I'm not going to respond to you and say, "Thank you for the email. I got it." But no, I read it. There's no question about that. And thanks for the encouragement to talk to other people. We just came off of the AMC conference, and yes, we did have opportunities to meet with commissioners from other counties. You mentioned the Washington County, the Scott County, Malax. Yes, there's other commissioners that we have, but not every commissioner is, and I'll point to myself, as technically savvy. I know how to read them, but I'm not going to respond as fast as others do. So, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of motion number one? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Motion number two, to approve the professional service agreement with Canvas Health, effective 1/1/25 through 12/31/26, pending final internal review.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion with those two modifications. One, that staff be given every opportunity to interview with Canvas, and that if legally possible, we can bridge gaps for the next 18 months if there's a disparity.
Mr. Chair? Well, let's get that second.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Administrator Hemsey?
Well, I'd like to ask Carrie, that sounds more like a closed session topic to me. If we're having the board guide a wage, I think we should go into a closed session, talk about the ramifications of that, and then what type of direct guidance does that? Do you want to come up and?
Carrie, do you want to respond to that? Or I'm going to ask, is it cleaner if we would drop the recommendations that Commissioner Udoman has and keep the motion clean the way it is? And then, maybe go into a closed session to discuss the employee relation interaction?
I wasn't discussing, I would talk about today.
As the motion maker, I'm going to keep it on the table. Here we're coming from and all that stuff. We're simply giving direction to whatever the parameters allow. We don't have to come back and touch it multiple times. It gives us the ability and flexibility to move forward.
Okay, but I hear that you're giving direction. That doesn't mean it has to be.
Yep, that's what the motion was.
Okay, just direction.
I don't know the legalities of it. You guys will sort that out as we are, but I don't want to do it and then come back and do it again.
That's why I'm looking at county attorney.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we can't bind Canvas on that, but if it's aspirational or something to discuss with them at a later date, I mean, that would be fine in this motion.
Okay. And then, also, we can't, because we don't know the dollar amount, what it means by bridging a gap.
And.
I don't think that's.
No, and we don't want to get too far outside of the, you know, the realm of a closed session. So, if that is to discuss the actual contract terms, that should be in a closed session. So, for purpose of this, it really, it's to approve this professional service agreement with Canvas Health, effective for those date, pending final internal review.
And the comment that Commissioner Udoman added, would that still be in this motion?
What do you want to say?
Well, I think we have two things going here. We have this request to Canvas to interview staff. I think you could request that, but it's not in the contract.
Right.
So, we have to amend the contract.
Request is fine.
Okay, if the request is fine, that's covered. The wage issue is different. If you direct staff to look at the wage gap, filling that, I think that's okay. But I would suggest we come back in the closed session and talk about, what does that mean?
And if it's even possible? Because, I mean, that's what.
It's possible on our end if the board approves it, right? We could do that, but I'm a little leery of just going out, having staff actually do that and come back without clear board direction, because there's ramifications to doing that. And I'm not as concerned about, there's budget ramifications, but more importantly, the ramifications on the employees, right? I need Carrie to come up and help me here.
So, we're okay with the way the motion was?
No, I want to hear from Carrie.
Okay, Carrie.
While we're waiting for Carrie, wouldn't we have to post it for three days? Because it's new information that we're considering.
You're talking about the motion?
No, to go to closed session.
Oh, yeah, we couldn't go in a closed session, not today, yeah, at another later, next year.
Carrie, welcome.
Thank you. I would agree that if the board wishes to discuss compensation of staff, that should be handled in a closed session.
So, then to this motion, this motion should stay as clean as possible?
Ideally.
I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? And by the third time, is there a second to the motion? Seeing none, how would somebody like to have a new motion?
I would move motion two as read on the board.
Is there a second to that?
I would second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve what motion two reads. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the clarification.
And then, Mr. Chair, to follow up on that, you could give direction to staff now to come back in a closed session if you're interested in closing a wage gap for employees. So, I'd look for that direction if you wanted to do that.
It doesn't have to be a motion to close the late wage gap. It'd be a motion to look into the possibility of closing that.
Discuss that further in a closed session.
If there is one.
Is that what, if that's the board's interest?
Matt, did you want?
I, yeah, I'd love for, if it's possible. I don't know if it's possible, legal seven, part of the legal review, if there's a possibility.
I know Canvas is very, I mean, they are interested in coming on site, doing a job fair, you know, sharing more about their company, their organization, their benefits, their wages. Those are things that are theirs to share with staff. I know they're interested in doing that in January so that they, and share the openings they'll have. I think beyond that step, there are a lot of factors in play. This pay you're talking about would only come into play if staff apply, if they'd be interviewed, if they'd be hired by Canvas. I mean, there's a long process with that. So, my thoughts are that we certainly can come back, but I don't, I mean, and I can talk with them about that, but I don't know at this point if there is action or information that we could provide.
I think we've accomplished what we wanted to. We've had the discussion, and I don't think anybody's pushing back on it. Let's be right by our employees, and it sounds like you've already heard that. It'll be part of your decision set. It's way more complex than giving specific direction, and so, I think we've accomplished what we need to accomplish.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, no closed session?
Nope, not at this point, not at this point, right. Item 3.3, County Administrator 2024 Performance, Annual Performance Evaluation. Carrie?
I don't know if it's morning or afternoon. Good afternoon. During the county board meeting on December 3rd, 2024, the board held a closed session with County Administrator Dave Hemsey in accordance with Minnesota statutes to discuss his 2024 performance. The summary of the board's evaluation of the county administrator's 2024 performance is shared today along with his overall performance rating, which is presented for the board's approval. The summary of the evaluation follows. County Administrator Hemsey demonstrated excellent leadership in his performance throughout 2024. His knowledge and experience, skill, and collaboration with his team resulted in continued high performance and positive results across various areas, from financial oversight, project guidance, technology investments, and overall service delivery excellence for the Carver County community and residents. Administrator Hemsey is respected by county board members and his peers in local government leadership. The board greatly values his tenure with the organization and his ongoing commitment to excellence. His insight, expertise, leadership, and accomplishments reflect overall outstanding performance in 2024. The recommended action at this time would be a motion to approve an overall rating of outstanding for County Administrator Hemsey's 2024 performance.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I would second.
Motion by myself, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve the overall outstanding rating for Administrator Hemsey. Any comments?
Commissioner Lynch? I hate to praise him too much, because I'm going to yell at him in his office a little bit, so.
Farther the job, Commissioner.
I'll take it. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I just think the demonstrate, the demonstration of the excellent leadership and where Carver County has gone, and just that I've been here, and for Dave to be the longest-serving county administrator within the metro area speaks for itself, so.
Yeah, I'll just echo that fact. I went talking to other commissioners and/or their administrators. They know who Dave is, and they respect that.
They really do, and that's even unsolicited, you know, and they say, "Dave really does a good job," and you, "Hemsey?" You know.
That's right, Dave. Okay, most, all, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Whoa, whoa, you know, I got a.
Commissioner Workman.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get a box of chocolates and flowers for the guy on my 41st wedding anniversary today, but, but thanks for what you do.
She's put up with you for 41 years?
41, yeah. What a woman. But anyway, yeah, thanks, Dave. You're like a warm shawl on a chilly November day. It's good to have. It's one less thing us county commissioners have to not worry about, like most of our staff, and so, we love it.
Any other final comments? All have a motion second, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 3.4, resolution setting the county attorneys and sheriffs' compensation. Carrie?
County board has the authority to set compensation, including salary and benefits, for elected county officials, including the county attorney and the county sheriff. Minnesota law requires that the board set the salaries for these elected officials with regard for the responsibilities and duties of office, as well as the elected official's experience, qualifications, and performance. In addition, court rulings indicate that commissioners should take into consideration salaries in similarly situated counties in the state. The recommended resolutions address the 2025 compensation for the county attorney and the county sheriff. County Attorney Mark Metz's 2024 salary is currently set at $213,757. County Sheriff Jason Camerud's 2024 salary is set at $190,955. Market data has been provided for the county attorney and county sheriff positions reflecting current year 2024 data. The metro area 2024 average salary for county attorney excluding Carver County is $210,055. Serving in this role since 2011, county attorney Mark Metz's performance reflects substantial experience and expertise and a high level of performance. Based on a review of the relevant factors for determining the county attorney's 2025 salary, it is recommended that the board consider an increase of $14,963, which is approximately 7%. The resulting 2025 annual salary for county attorney Metz would be $228,720. The salary increase suggested would recognize the high level of performance county attorney Metz has demonstrated in his role while maintaining competitive pay with regard to the market. The metro area average salary for county sheriff excluding Carver County is $192,083. Serving in this role since 2019. Serving in this role since 2019, Sheriff Camerud's performance reflects substantial experience and expertise and a high level of performance. Based on a review of the relevant factors for determining the county sheriff's 2025 salary, it is recommended that the board consider an increase of $13,367, which is approximately 7%. The resulting 2025 annual salary for Sheriff Camerud would be $204,322. The salary increase suggested would recognize the high level of performance Sheriff Camerud has demonstrated in his role while maintaining competitive pay with regard to the market. The action requested of the board at this time is a motion to adopt the resolutions defining the 2025 compensation for the county attorney and for the county sheriff and providing both with 2025 cafeteria benefits and HSA contributions at the same rates and in accordance with the same terms and timing as non-bargaining county employees.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Workman, to adopt the resolution. Any discussion on that motion?
I have chocolates. I have a chocolate for Matt.
Commissioner Lynch.
I'm not paying anyone off with chocolate. No, we have a wonderful sheriff and a wonderful county attorney and we're very fortunate to have them, very knowledgeable and they do a wonderful job, so we have no problem with that at all.
Other comments? Commissioner Udoman?
I, I think one thing that we don't even talk about, but we're seeing increasingly so in the media, is the protection of these guys too. I mean, the threats that Metz has had to field, I think we've gotten a few on our side. I think the only increase is our population gets bigger and as, as people can continue to push out this way. And I know that your peer in Hennepin County has personal security. I mean, I, I bring that up to say these jobs aren't just, you know, people can just look at the big number starts with a two, you know, blah, 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 but there's, there's, there's a lot of pieces of that. Also, Mark, particularly you, you're out in professional organizations. You're out there putting yourself out there, colleges and universities to try and bring people to our community and, and people know that this is a place to work. And so I, I also support the increases that are recommended. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would support the recommendation wholeheartedly for what the sheriff and the county attorney, what they do for, for us and, and everything and just being at that latest AMC conference and to hear about other situations with the roles that we're in and the roles that county attorney represents and the sheriff represents and the protection and so on. So you guys are doing a great job, so thank you.
Commissioner Workman?
Same thing. Metz, a good guy, just like, just like Hemsey, except he's more of a sleeping bag, warm sleeping bag. That's all I can come up with. And the sheriff, I don't even want to get on.
I was going to say, I wish the sheriff were here. I'd just like to see.
The sheriff's like a bunch of doilies. I'm, I might be in jail tonight.
Any other discussion?
But anyway, I, I do appreciate all you do, Mark. Good health to you this week and good news, so.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimously. Keep it going, Kerry.
All right. The county board is also charged with the responsibility to set compensation, including salary and benefits for county commissioners. Several factors are typically considered when setting commissioner salaries, including market rates, as well as internal salary history and patterns. Metro area market information was included in the board packet, which reflects Carver County Commissioner's current 2024 annual salary set at $83,769 in comparison to the metro county average of $95,722. Comparison data reviewed in relation to the elected salary setting process includes the same counties referenced for purposes of Carver County's most recent classification and compensation study, which includes the seven metro counties. The county's current collective bargaining agreements establish a 2025 performance-based compensation system, a general adjustment increase pattern, including a January 2025 general adjustment of 4% and performance-based compensation determined by each employee's overall rating on their performance evaluation, providing no increase for needs improvement or 3% for achieved performance, which includes overall ratings of successful, exceeds expectations and outstanding. An increase of around $12,000 would be required to move the Carver County Commissioner's salary to the current year metro average. It is anticipated that comparable counties will also be increasing their county commissioner salaries with regard for the current market. It is recommended the board consider an increase that would reasonably move alignment toward the market average or at minimum avoid increasing the gap. When defining the 2025 county commissioner's salary, the board could consider an increase of 7% applied to the current commissioner's salary in order to maintain a salary relatively aligned with the comparable county data. A 7% increase or $5,864 applied to the current commissioner's salary of $83,769 would result in a 2025 county commissioner's salary of $89,633. The recommended resolution provides annual salaries to be set by the board, cafeteria benefits and HSA contributions at the same rates as non-bargaining employees and monthly expense allowances maintaining current rates of $715 for the chair, $640 for the vice chair and $615 for the other commissioners, or amounts as updated and defined by the county board for 2025. So the action requested at this time is to define the 2025 county commissioner compensation and benefits and adopt the resolution establishing county commissioner salaries and monthly expense allowances for 2025 and providing 2025 cafeteria benefits and HSA contributions at the same rates and in accordance with the same terms and timing as non-bargaining county employees.
As an outgoing duck, I think it's only fitting that we stay even with the other metro counties. The 7% increase that we provided to the other positions, I think would be fitting, but that's just my thought.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Workman? I'll second that. So that would put the, well, if we said, the 7% increase gives it right there. Is that enough definition? Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Four to one. Okay, with that, we need a motion to recess the regular session and enter a closed session. As provided, do we have to have the statute that provides that?
I would.
Statute 13D.05 subsection C, to determine asking price, review confidential appraisals and discuss the sale price of real property located at 12404 Kelly Avenue, Cologne. The PID would be 040080900. Is that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman, to go into closed session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We will clear out and enter into closed session and we'll take about a five minute break.
Mr. Metz, we have a commissioner-elect here. Can she sit in on this or no?
No.